Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call this public meeting of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York to order. I'd like to request that everyone take a moment to mute your cellphone or whatever else you have. And I'd like also to say we have a different sound system for today's meeting, and in order for us to tape the meeting properly, everyone needs to speak directly into the microphone when they have the floor. I know that I speak for everyone here today in expressing the overwhelming sense of shock and loss we all feel at the passing of our dear friend and colleague Vice Chancellor Ernesto Malavi. Ernesto earned the highest regard of everyone on this board for his professionalism, his integrity, and his great devotion to this university. Before I ask everyone to observe a moment of silence in his memory, I would like to call on Chancellor Matthew Goldstein, and I know that two or three additional trustees would like to speak for a moment. Mr. Chancellor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, how do we assess the measure of a man? I believe that you look at where he came from and what challenges he faced when he started. You take stock of how far he came and how he blossomed into a man who conducted his life with honor and with dignity. You look at his impact on his communities, the lives he affected, and the examples he set. Ernesto, as all of us know, came from very humble beginnings, poor and forced to go to schools where his full abilities wouldn't be realized. But Ernesto always knew that educating and education and developing skill sets were his ride out of the world he knew as a very young man. CUNY was his safe haven where he got his formal higher education, but it also allowed him to develop a curiosity about the world and a desire to go deeper into the complex problems we face in our society. As a result, he had an affinity and a passion and a demonstrated early skill in matters of finance and budgeting. And when I came on board as chancellor and got to know Ernesto well, I took a chance and appointed him interim vice chancellor for budget and finance. Ultimately, Chairman, I was pleased and confident to recommend him as the permanent vice chancellor, and boy, did he shine and excel. His litany of successes are numerous and well documented, including, for example, his building the homegrown CUNY compact idea into the investment vehicle it is today. It was Ernesto who found a way to reshape our budget to allow for an unprecedented wave of faculty hiring. Over his distinguished tenure as vice chancellor, the university saw an increase of approximately 1,700 full-time faculty. When we started the Macaulay Honors College, the School of Professional Studies, the Graduate School of Journalism, and the newly created School of Public Health, Ernesto was there, thinking through the budgeting implications, and always saying to me, "We'll figure it out and we'll get it done." The Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. is quoted as saying, "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy." No matter the situation, I always knew I had Ernesto by my side. All of us here and across the university and well beyond know that Ernesto was someone they could count on, someone who stood tall and stood up for others. All of us have been touched by Ernesto's friendships, his professional acumen, his creative energy, and his goodwill. But most of all, ladies and gentlemen, he never forgot where he came from, and he brought that caring and awareness to myriad young people who struggled and succeeded in getting to where they are today. His impact will be felt across the university for years to come. CUNY is a better place in every way because of him. Today, our hearts go out to his family. Our only hope is that they might be comforted in some small way in seeing how much he was loved by friends and colleagues at this great university. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Loa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ernesto was a friend, a great friend, and you know, there's something about budget guys, and Mark will appreciate this, having once been a budget director, were technicians of a certain sort and a certain style. But Ernesto had a unique ability that I've never seen in any other budget or finance person, whether in the government or in the private sector or in even a college or university setting. Long before the buzzwords of transparency became important in the world in trying to understand what budgets do, Ernesto got it. Ernesto was there. Always amazed me, regardless of what constituency he went to, whether it was the faculty or the students, they came away knowing more, they came away understanding the budget, which in and of itself is not an easy task. And he was a great teacher of the budget. He was able to get across relatively complicated concepts quite easily. And quite honestly, I will miss him, and as you've mentioned, the university will miss him. He was a great asset. His life was cut short, and for his family, it's unfathomable what they're going through. But in the short time, in the four or five, more than that, six or seven years that I've worked with him, not a meeting went by, not a day went by when I wasn't more and more impressed with how he did, how he made a very, very complicated job seem simple and straightforward, and that says a lot about the man. He took hard things and made them look easy, and we all know, and we all knew that they weren't. Thank you.
Professor Philip.
The university faculty senate expresses its deep sorrow at the untimely death of Vice Chancellor Malavi. Vice Chancellor Malavi was extraordinarily skillful at his job at managing CUNY's finances, but he had numerous other virtues. He had a very fine sense of humor. He set a great example of loyalty and generosity to those around him. He had limitless devotion to CUNY and to his job. He had a real sense of fairness. While he disliked the occasional foolishness that he encountered here, he never showed that in a bitter and cynical way. His fondness for the faculty, especially including its adjuncts, went back to his early days in CUNY, when the faculty awakened in him the intellectual depths that he may not have known that he had. He met monthly with a group of UFS senators to discuss issues of budget and finance. He befriended the faculty and became an open, attentive, and sincere colleague. As a BMCC graduate, Vice Chancellor Malavi epitomized what CUNY stands for. We will miss his wit, intelligence, generosity, and charm.
Thank you. Trustee Provost.
On behalf of USS and the university's elected student representatives, I'd like to echo the sentiments of the chancellor and my fellow trustees in offering my condolences to Vice Chancellor Malavi's family. Long prior to his service to our university community as a CUNY vice chancellor, during his years as a CUNY undergraduate student, Ernesto Malavi was a student president at BMCC and a member to the university student senate steering committee. As university budget director and later as vice chancellor for budget and finance, Mr. Malavi always kept the elected student leadership of the university informed about university budget issues. He never forgot the important role that student governance played in our university, and he will indeed be surely missed.
Thank you very much. I'd like now to ask everyone to observe a moment of silence in memory of our friend CUNY TV is transmitting this public session of this afternoon's meeting of the board live on cable channel seventy-five. The meeting is also being webcast live and can be accessed by going to www.cuny.edu. The public session of this board meeting will be available as a podcast within twenty-four hours and can also be accessed via the CUNY website. If I failed to note it at the beginning, we will have a brief executive session at the end of this public session, and we expect then to reconvene in public session following that executive session. On behalf of the board, I would like to formally welcome interim president Robert Passwell of City College and interim vice chancellor for Student Affairs Peter Grant Jordan to the board meeting. I would also like to welcome university budget director Matthew Sapienza to the table. Thank you all for your service to the university. I would like to congratulate trustees Kathleen Pacilli and Rita DiMartino, who were each presented with a Service to Education Award by the Saint Rock School in Staten Island at its Circle of Love Vision of Dreams luncheon on October twenty-fifth. Congratulations, trustees Pacilli and DiMartino. I would like to add further congratulations to trustee DiMartino, who received the Lehman College Foundation's award for Community Leadership at its recognition and student scholarship dinner on October twenty-eighth. Congratulations again, trustee DiMartino. Congratulations to trustee Wellington Chen, who was presented with the New York Post 2009 Liberty Medal for Freedom on October twenty-eighth. The Freedom Medal is awarded to an immigrant New Yorker who best embodies the values of honesty, industriousness, and hard-earned success, or a native New Yorker who reflects the finest qualities of New York to the world. Trustee Chen, you qualify on all counts. I would also like to congratulate trustee and deputy mayor for Legal Affairs Carol A. Robles-Roman, who received a 2009 Don Quixote Leadership Award from the Brooklyn College Department of Puerto Rican and Latino Studies at its fortieth anniversary celebration on November twelfth. Congratulations, trustee Robles-Roman. I would like to thank trustees Robles-Roman, Rita Foster Tolbert, and Kathleen Pacilli for their presentations at the CUNY Women's Leadership Conference that was held on November twentieth at Hunter College titled Civic Engagement: Leadership Through Service. I know Chancellor Goldstein will want to comment about this award when we hear his report. Finally, on behalf of the board and Chancellor Goldstein, I would like to congratulate and welcome new USS chairperson and student trustee Cory Provost. Cory, welcome. We look forward to working with you. The chancellor and I have scheduled a dinner with newly-elected CUNY student leaders next Monday, November thirty, from six to eight p.m. here in this room. We look forward at that dinner to meeting the new members of the USS Steering Committee, and I hope a warm invitation to all members of the board who are free that evening to join us with the student leaders. On behalf of the board, I would like to express our appreciation to Simone Lamont for her service as USS chairperson during the past academic year. And finally, it's my pleasure to congratulate Chancellor Goldstein, who was presented with the 2009 New Yorker of the Year Award by the Board of Directors of the Manhattan Chamber of Commerce. Previous recipients of this award include Mayor Bloomberg, Pete Peterson, Jim Leventhal, Charlie Rose, and David Remnick. Congratulations to you, Chancellor Goldstein. I know that all the members of the board were pleased and proud to read the very significant article about CUNY that appeared in the November sixteenth issue of New York Times. You have a copy of that article at the table. Headline, "At CUNY, Mission to Elevate Science Begins to Bear Fruit." The article confirmed what we already know, that CUNY is competing effectively in the global marketplace of ideas and discoveries in science, and that there is a growing national recognition of the excellence of our university. Dean Anderson and the CUNY School of Law report that one hundred CUNY law students took the July 2009 New York State Bar Exam for the first time, and eighty passed. Once again, the CUNY School of Law has matched the statewide average for first-time takers, which was eighty percent this year. Congratulations, Dean Anderson, and let's keep the improvements going forward.[1013.04][1013.04](applause) On behalf of my fellow trustees, I would like to express our condolences to the family of Hunter College distinguished professor of art Roy DeCarova, who passed away on October twenty-seventh. Many of you will recall that he was introduced to this board at its meeting on January twenty-ninth, two thousand and seven, on the occasion of his receiving the 2006 National Medal of the Arts from former President George W. Bush. I'd like now to call on trustee Valerie Beal to announce college and faculty honors.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hunter College English Department distinguished lecturer Colin McCain has just won the 2009 National Book Award in Fiction for his book Let the Great World Spin. And Hunter College distinguished professor of Sociology Nancy Fauner was recently chosen by the Social Science Research Council, the French National Research Agency, and the Institute of Advanced Study in Lyon, France, to direct an international dissertation fellowship workshop. Congratulations. City College distinguished research professor of biomedical and mechanical engineering, Sheldon Weinbaum, received the National Biomedical Engineering Society's inaugural Diversity Award for his longstanding efforts to integrate women and underrepresented minorities into engineering. Congratulations. College of Staten Island adjunct instructor Thomas Mormino, LaGuardia College College Associate Professor Frank Wang, and Baruch College lecturer Walter Wang were each the recipient of Chancellor Matthew Goldstein's awards for undergraduate mathematics instruction, conferred at the CUNY new faculty reception on October twenty-ninth. Congratulations. Members of the CUNY family were chosen as members of the selection panel of the Fund for the City of New York Sloan Award for Excellence in Teaching Science and Mathematics. They are City College distinguished professors Sheldon Weinbaum and Ruth Stark, and City College Associate Professor Maribel Vasquez, Hunter College professors Jill Bargoniti-Shavara and Derek Brazil, and City College graduate Lev Schlippdorff. Congratulations to them. Kingsborough Community College Physical Science professors Harold Connolly and Michael Weisberg were appointed vice chairs of the Seventy-Third Annual Meetings of the Meteorological Society, which will be held in New York City in the summer of 2010. Congratulations. Mr. Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Pacilli, you're just in time to announce student and alumni honors.
Magar Evers College students placed first in the Wharton Undergraduate Marketing Conference case study, with the competition beating out teams from Wharton, Drexel, and SUNY Anantou. Congratulations. Macaulay Honors College at Brooklyn College, 2007 graduate Ryan Marola, a Truman Scholar and New York City Urban Fellow, has been selected as one of the nine George Mitchell Scholarship recipients. The Mitchell Scholarship Program is a nationally competitive fellowship sponsored by the U.S.-Ireland Alliance, named in honor of former U.S. Senator George Mitchell's pivotal contribution to the Northern Ireland peace, and this is the first time in the history of the scholarship that a CUNY student has been selected for this highly competitive award. Congratulations. Former Hunter College High School graduate Alexandra Rosenberg, who is top of her class at West Point, was named yesterday to this year's Class of Rhodes Scholars. She will be heading to Oxford University next year to study global health. Brooklyn College alumnus Greg Grandin, class of 1992, was a finalist in the 2009 National Book Award in Nonfiction for his book Fordlandia: The Rise and Fall of Henry Ford's Forgotten Jungle. Congratulations. Queens College Minority Access to Research Careers Program members and past Goldwater scholar Jamar Wally was honored at the National Conference of Sigma Xi when his poster won the Superior Presentation Award. Congratulations. Thomas Hunter Honors Program student at Hunter College Hanan Tabara was accepted into the International Journalism Program organized by the United Nations Department of Public Information and Non-Governmental Organization. And Hunter College graduate urban planning student Paul Costa and Paolo Lellis was chosen as Community Planning Fellows by the Manhattan Borough President's Office. Congratulations. Five Baruch College students, one graduate and four undergraduates, received American Humanics Next Gen Awards of $4,500 each. Congratulations. Among the colleges listed as top U.S. producers of Fulbright students by type of institutions for 2009, in a recent article on the Chronicle of Higher Education, Hunter College tied for second among the seven other institutions in the Masters category, while City College was in the top half among the twenty-nine institutions listed in this category. Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you very much. A list of grants and gifts received by the university since our September twenty-ninth, two thousand and nine, meeting is available on the table and in the trustees' calendar book. I'd like now to call on Chancellor Goldstein to present his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With Ernesto's loss, we now are going to be relying on Matthew Sapienza, who's been our university budget director for a few years, and we have long relied on Matthew's good work, and we will continue to rely on you, Matthew, and thank you for jumping in at this very difficult time. Mr. Chairman, I'm pleased to make a very important announcement. Bitterman Hall has been completely deconstructed, a word that we started using here a few years ago, and something that we have worked so hard on for so many years. And I want to particularly congratulate President Antonio Perez, Vice Chancellor Iris Weinsholl, and Senior Vice Chancellor Jay Hirschensohn, whose work was indefatigable and so focused over these past few years. If we were enough of the three of them, I don't think that we would be where we are today, so thank you for that very good work. We are now in a position to begin rebuilding what was lost over eight years ago. A groundbreaking ceremony is being planned for Tuesday, December first. Just some quick remarks on the state budget as we know it today. Obviously, we are living in a very dynamic time as it relates to the budget for the current year. I've reported that we have a budget deficit of at least $3.2 billion, and I think many believe the number is north of that. Governor Patterson has proposed a deficit reduction plan. The proposed reduction for CUNY senior colleges is $53 million, which represents approximately 4.8 percent cut in state support taken against non-personnel service costs. In addition, the DRP proposes $10 million in cuts to our community colleges, mainly through a base aid reduction in the amount of $260 per FTE student, as well as cuts to related community college support, including childcare centers, rental aid, workforce development, and the college discovery program. Last week, the governor convened a special session of the state legislature in order to reach an agreement on the DRP, but so far, there has yet to be an accord, so stay tuned. The university, as you know, anticipated the likelihood of a mid-year cut and took appropriate measures to mitigate its effect and prevent significant diminishing of our academic services supports. We have been working closely with the governor's office and the legislature in response to the program, and you all received copies of my testimony submitted to the legislature and their fiscal committees. As previously discussed, we are concerned about the years ahead, not just the short-term impact, especially in light of increased enrollments and the importance of CUNY's role in an unforgiving economy. On the city budget side, on November sixteenth, Mayor Bloomberg issued target reductions to all city agencies of four percent in the current fiscal year and eight percent in FY 2011. CUNY's reduction target is $9.5 million in the current year and $15.4 million next year. Obviously, we are working tirelessly to get that turned about. We have begun a dialogue with both the mayor's office and the city council, and we are hopeful to get some consideration. I really would like to thank budget director Matthew Sapienza, interim vice chancellor Peter Jordan, President Ricardo Fernandez, and President Eduardo Martí for testifying before the New York City Council Higher Education Committee last week on the impact of these reductions. Compounding the problem is the enormous growth in our enrollment that we experienced dramatically last fall and continues for the spring of 2010. For the spring semester, freshman applications have increased seventeen percent, and transfer applications have increased about eleven percent. About two-thirds of the increase in freshman applications and a half of the increase in transfer applications are from students who wish to attend our community colleges. Given that this fall compared to last fall, our enrollment increased by six percent in headcount and eight percent in FTEs, and the comparable figures for the community colleges were nine percent and thirteen percent, we will be watching this situation very carefully. We do not want growth to be so rapid as to compromise our ability to deliver the best academic experience that we collectively here at the university are capable of. And Executive Vice Chancellor Loog and other members of the administration And Executive Vice Chancellor Logue and other members of the administration have been working with each of our presidents for plans on enrollment targets for the spring and for the fall. Last week, Mr. Chairman, I was pleased to participate in a roundtable discussion regarding promising strategies to increase community college graduation rates that was organized by the New York City Center for Economic Opportunity. I had the opportunity to talk about the progress of our accelerated study in Associate Programs Initiative, commonly known as ASAP, and the success the program is having in improving graduation rates. We will shortly be announcing what those graduation rates, and they are quite significant indeed. I want to thank first and foremost John Mokalescu, who has led this effort with Donald Lindemann, and want to thank them for their undivided attention to this very important project, and extend deep appreciation to our mayor, Deputy Mayor Gibbs, and the Center for Economic Opportunity for their leadership and for their belief that this program really could set the stage for a thoroughly new discussion about how to educate students that study at these important institutions. As I reported to the board in September, planning for a new community college is well underway. Last week, I participated in an all-day meeting at the New York Academy of Sciences focusing on possible community college pathways and partnerships in the health profession. The meeting was funded through a grant from the Macy Foundation, whose mission is the advancement of education of health professionals. And on November 16th, Mr. Chairman, there was a highly successful and well-attended event in East Harlem to celebrate the groundbreaking for the Lois V. and Samuel J. Silverman School of Social Work at Hunter College and the new CUNY School of Public Health and the Library for the Center of Puerto Rican Studies. The governor spoke and presented a proclamation to the Silverman family. I particularly want to thank President Jennifer Rabb and our founding dean of the School of Public Health, Kenneth Olden, on all their great work, and again to thank Jay Hirschenson, who just continues to work miracles behind the scenes, behind the curtain, but his effect is always well acknowledged. I'd also like to note, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, that we learned on October 29th that the Council on Education for Public Health, the professional association that accredits schools of public health, voted that CUNY can become a candidate to have an accredited school of public health. This is a very real. We can now formally declare that CUNY has a school of public health, and when we graduate a couple more students in our master's programs and our doctoral programs, that accreditation will come in in 2011. At the well-attended CUNY Women's Leadership Conference this past Friday, I was honored to award retired New York State Chief Justice Judge Judith K. the Chancellor's Medal in recognition of her groundbreaking public service, judicial accomplishments, and inspired leadership. This also was the child Jay Hirschenson, Jay, you're getting a lot of recognition tonight, but truly deserved, and all of the women presidents that have worked with Jay to make this a reality. I'd like to congratulate President Gail Mello on the recent announcement by Goldman Sachs that LaGuardia Community College will be its first partner in a $500 million initiative to help grow 10,000 small businesses across the nation. The 10,000 Small Business Initiative will provide funding to LaGuardia and other community colleges across the nation to provide practical business and management education to small business owners. Goldman will be giving $200 million to these colleges and other educational partnerships and $300 million in loans to grants to small businesses. I'd like to congratulate President Jeremy Travis on being one of the 37 selected to serve on the transition team for Mayor District Attorney-elect Cy Vance. I'd like to congratulate President Jennifer Rabb on being named one of the 50 most powerful women in New York City by Crane's New York Business Magazine. And I'd also like to congratulate Vice Chancellor Iris Weinsholl on being elected to the New York Academy of Sciences Board of Governors. On January 30th, we will salute our corporate and foundation partners at a special recognition event. Ivan Seidenberg, chairman and CEO of Verizon, will be our keynote speaker. And lastly, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to draw your attention to the investing in futures public higher education in America. 2010 calendar at your place. This was a fabulous event at the New York Times, and guess whose brainchild it was? Jay Hirschenson. That's it, Jay. Four for four. And also to call your attention to the salute to scholars publication. I haven't even seen it yet, but it's very handsome, and it really is a wonderful testimony to the extraordinary work of our faculty across the university. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any questions for Jay on the chancellor? Questions for the chancellor? All right, we'll turn now to policy items requiring a vote. I would like to move the adoption of the chancellor's university report for November 23rd, 2009. You have copies of that report on the table. May I have a second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstentions, that carries. Next, I'd like to move the approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting and the executive session of September 29, 2009. You have a copy of the draft minutes in your books. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments, revisions to the minutes? Not all in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstentions, that carries. We'll turn now to reports from our committees. We'll hear first from the Committee on Fiscal Affairs, trustee Joe Loda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Fiscal Affairs met on November 2nd, 2009, and approved numerous different resolutions. I'd like to take calendar item 3A, 3C, and 3D together, and then take calendar item 3B, the fiscal year 2010, 2011 budget request last. So, calendar item 3A is a resolution authorizing the Office of General Counsel to execute one or more contracts for the collection and litigation services to recover delinquent student loans and other debts. Such contracts shall be awarded to the lowest responsive and responsible bidders after public advertisement and sealed bidding process pursuant to law and university regulations. The contract term for each contract shall be five years, with an option for the university to terminate on each contract anniversary date. Calendar item 3C is a resolution authorizing the Board of Trustees to appoint State Street Bank and Trust Company as custodian of the securities, cash, and other assets maintained in the university investment pool, and to delegate authority to the university controller to execute all contracts, deeds, and other instruments in connection with such custodianship. After a recently conducted competitive process, the university determined that State Street would best meet the needs of the university. State Street is recognized leader in the trust custody business, and through their partnership with the Northeast Retirement Systems, a third-party provider of investment accounting. State Street will provide a seamless, totally outsourced service that will permit the reconciliation of fund accounts and facilitate the use of CUNY first. And calendar item 3D is a resolution authorizing the Board of Trustees to appoint Walter Scott International Fund as investment advisor for a portion of the international equity assets in the university's investment pool, and to delegate authority to the controller to execute all contracts, deeds, and other instruments in connection with such advisory relationship. In December 2008, the board approved an increase in the amount of international equity allocation in the university investment pool from 10% to 20% to bring the global equity portfolio closer to the world market capitalization weights. Walter Scott International Fund, a well-respected firm with substantial resources and a focus on global and non-U.S. equity investing, was selected following a competitive process. Mr. Chairman, please note that there will be no vote taken on calendar item 3B during the public session. There was no vote taken on calendar on item 3B during the public session of the November 2nd committee. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of calendar items 3A, 3C, and 3D.
May I have a second?
Second.
Are there questions for the committee on any of these three items? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Yes, Mr. Provost? Can you speak into the mic?
I wanted to make a few brief statements regarding calendar item 3B. Regarding calendar item 3B, I do believe at this time, if presented to the budget...
Point of order? We'll introduce 3B first. We're on 3A, C, and D. And I think we're ready for the vote on those. If there are no comments or questions, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, abstentions, those carry. Now, you want to take up item 3B?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. But before I do that, I would like to, the request, I would like to mention that the committee approved on November 2nd, at the November 2nd meeting, a resolution authorizing Hunter College to increase dormitory fees by 15 and 18% in the spring of next year, as well as the fall of next year, respectively. This resolution has been rescinded at the request of Hunter President Jennifer Rabb for reintroduction at a later time. So, calendar item 3B is a resolution to adopt the university's fiscal year 2010, 2011 operating budget request. Subject to the availability of resources, the city university seeks a total of $2.735 billion for the university. This total includes additional funding of $155 million, comprising $92 million for baseline needs and $63 million for programmatic increases. For the 2010, 2011 budget request, the university proposes to continue the CUNY compact, its ongoing approach to financing the master plan for the education of CUNY students. The university seeks to finance its ongoing obligations utilizing state and city funds and investment program funds generated by a modest increase in public funding, continued budget restructuring inefficiencies, philanthropic support, revenues from enrollment growth, and an increase in tuition of $45 per semester for senior college undergraduate resident students and $30 per semester for community college students. Tuition rates for all other students will be raised proportionally. The university's priorities this year are the hiring of additional full-time faculty and support for research, academic enhancement, and student services. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of calendar item 3B, and following that, I'd like to call on the chancellor to make some background information about the report.
All right, may I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chancellor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and trustee Loda. We know that this is going to be a very rough year for the state of New York. We know the balance sheet of New York, as the balance sheet is for probably 46 other states in the United States, is in a very weakened position. Our budget today obviously was discussed in consultation with the DOB, just as not only politest, but to really share with them some of the ideas. I think they are very supportive of what the university needs to accomplish to maintain its investment posture over the next couple of years. But we present this budget with an understanding that we are facing some very, very difficult times, and our goals, our aspirations, may indeed be tempered by the fiscal realities of the state at this time. We are, this particular budget request again emanates from the master plan, which is the way that all of our budgets are derived from. It will be dominated by our continuing effort to build up the faculties across our campuses. I need to remind you that in the mid-1970s, the university had approximately 11,500 full-time faculty. I announced earlier in the meeting that in this current administration, we have increased the baseline from about 5,400 full-time faculty to about 7,100 full-time faculty. I think that is without precedent for any university in the United States, but we still have to continue moving in that direction. I think it is the right thing for our students. Clearly, academic support services are going to be emphasized as well in this budget request, and in addition, educational technology. Our faculties, as they should be, are utilizing very sophisticated technological tools as part of the pedagogical environment that our students study, and we have to ensure that those faculty members that are more and more demanding access to these tools have the appropriate instruction and support, and this budget reflects that as well. Nursing and the health professions is another area that we want to continue to build up. I think trustee Morales would agree that the demand for healthcare professionals throughout the spectrum of healthcare professionals is clearly in need of building up, and we are committed to doing that, and the budget request shows that as well. And of course, the decade of science, which our chairman alluded to in that New York Times article, is a very serious effort for the university to really bolster science at this university. As I've said to this board on many occasions, no great university can aspire to being in the forefront of research and teaching unless it really takes on the challenges of science education. Scientific literacy, for me and for so many of us, is a sine qua non for a healthy and competitive citizenry, and for that matter, and for leadership in this country, I think it's important that we build up what we can in our programs in science, and certainly we are investing mightily on the capital side in this as well. And lastly, student services. We are a huge university, getting larger and larger. The complexities that our students face on a daily basis are also becoming more challenging, and we have to invest in student services more than we have in the past, and we're committed to do that. That, Mr. Chairman, is sort of an outline of where we are making our priorities, and hopefully, we will get favorable consideration for some of what that we hope to do.
Thank you. Chair Loda, did you say you had further comments on this?
No, I'd like to introduce at this point Matthew Sapienza, the university budget director. In front of everyone is an outline. We're not going to go through the whole thing, we're just going to go through some highlights.
Thank you, trustee Loda. Good afternoon, everyone. The chancellor provided an excellent context for where we are in terms of our budget situation, which are contained on the first few pages of our presentation, so we won't go through those, but I want to take you to page five, which has our funding chart. And there you can see that against our current year budget of $2.6 billion, we're asking for $92 million in mandatory needs increases and $63 million for programmatic needs for total request of $155 million, which would bring our budget to next year up to over $2.7 billion. On page six, you can see the components of our requested increases. We are also self-financing about $7.5 million of... We are also self-financing about seven and a half million of the programmatic increase through restructuring and increased philanthropy, which brings our total programmatic investment program to $162 million, of which we're requesting $155 additional funds. And on page six, you see the components of those, which the chancellor, you know, went through. On full-time faculty, this request includes the addition of two-hundred-and-fifty additional full-time faculty lines. And on page seven is more detail on that investment program. On student services, we're refocusing the program from fiscal year 2010. 2010, our main focus on the investment program for student services was for veteran services and career services and also to increase support for financial aid offices. Fiscal year eleven request, we are refocusing that to students, to services with students with disabilities, to health services on the campuses, and to helping out our childcare centers on the campuses. In addition, on that third bullet, you'll see that we're requesting fifteen-point-two million for upgrading our facilities, of which about ten million of it is for new buildings' needs. Through our capital budget, we have been able to open new buildings at Medgar Evers, Brooklyn, Lehman, and Hunter Colleges, and have an expansion of a building at Queens College. So now that these new facilities have been constructed, we need to pay for the cost of operating these buildings for both personnel services, for security, facilities' needs, and for other-than-personal services costs for the purchases needed to operate those buildings. So that's a big component of our request, which is something new that we haven't had since we actually opened this building at the vertical campus here several years ago. On page nine, you see the components of our mandatory needs request, of our $92 million request. Fringe benefits by far is the major component that's driving up the mandatory needs, over $61 million in fringe benefits costs, most of which emanate from additional pensions and health insurance costs. Our energy request for next year is very minimal when compared to previous years, $1.2 million. Energy costs are actually coming down, which is a good thing. Building rentals, we're asking for over $10 million, which again is a little higher than we've had in previous years, and that is due to the space constraints that many of our campuses are facing. And salary increments due to contractual increases and other-than-personal services inflation are the last component of our mandatory needs. On page ten, we have the breakout of how we're going to pay for this $162 million. We are requesting that the state and city pick up the mandatory needs as we've requested in previous years when they, since the compact has begun as our financing vehicle in fiscal year 2007. And we're also asking the state and city to pick up eleven, over eleven million dollars for our programmatic request. The community college state base aid increase, we are requesting an increase of $50 in base aid per FTE, which would bring the reimbursement from the state to $2,725 per FTE, and that would generate almost $29 million in additional funds for our community colleges. We are requesting a tuition increase of two percent across the board at the senior colleges. This would equate to a $45 increase for full-time students per semester. The community colleges, it would be a $30 increase per semester. That would generate $28 million. On enrollment growth, this request assumes a .5 percent increase in enrollment growth, which would generate $5 million. Again, this is smaller than we've done in past years. We want to recognize the fact that the university's enrollment has grown to record numbers and that some of our campuses are challenged in terms of bringing in additional students. And so we've brought that down from previous years when our compact is called for enrollment increases of one and a half percent, one percent. So we've brought that down. And restructuring philanthropy, our final two components of self-financing, which is generating almost seven and a half million dollars. Again, we've brought these components down from previous years. On philanthropy, we want to recognize the environment that we're currently in in terms of fundraising, that it's more challenging than it has been in past years. And on restructuring, we want to recognize the tremendous work that our colleges have done over the past five years in terms of being more efficient and the budget reductions that in particular our senior colleges have taken beginning last year. So those are the components of the $162 million. On page eleven, you can see the percentages of what we're asking for, and that seventy-five percent of this budget request would be funded through public support. The remaining twenty-five percent would be through self-financing components, and you can see the breakout there by the senior community. On slides twelve and thirteen are historical enrollment charts to show from the beginning of this decade through the current year, the increases in both headcount and on FTEs. And you can see on page thirteen the tremendous increase that we've had since the beginning of the decade when we had 137,000 FTEs university-wide. We are now, in this semester, fall 2009, up to 193,000. And in the past year alone, we've added 17,000 FTEs at this university. So we want to provide some context as to the need for additional faculty and our other requests for student services and the like. And lastly, on page fourteen and fifteen are charts on the tuition rates that we are proposing compared to our competitors here in the New York City area. You can see that on the senior colleges on page fourteen, we're proposing a two percent increase that would bring our rate up to $4,690 annually, which is still well below our competitors here in the New York City area. SUNY's rate of $4,950 is their current-year rate. They have also proposed, and has been approved by their Board of Trustees last week, a two percent increase, which would bring them slightly above 5,000. On page fifteen, you can see a similar chart for the community colleges. The two percent increase for the community colleges would bring the annual rate up to $3,210 for a full-time resident student, which again is below our competitors here in the New York City area. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman. I think upon reviewing the university's budget request, every student would deeply agree with the chancellor's remarks regarding student services and that it is a top priority for this university, especially in the areas of childcare services and additional funding for students with disabilities. However, I think this body should deeply consider when discussing another tuition hike in light of last year's tuition hike. And, but again, I do think that the students do support this budget, except, with the exception of the tuition hike. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Professor Phillips?
I'd like to congratulate members of the chancellery for a budget that even in times like these holds firm to the idea that a university has to have, that has a growing student population, has to have a growing faculty, full-time faculty population. It's absolutely essential, given some of the issues the university has faced in the past when we had a declining faculty. We need to recover full-time faculty numbers and even in times like these. At the same time, I'd like to also note in a very positive way additional funds for planning of the School of Pharmacy. That's really important for this university and the continued planning for new construction for classroom facilities. We really need that, especially given the vastly increased number of students coming our way. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Are there other comments or questions from the trustees? If not, we'll take up item three B, the university's budget request. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention noted. The request carries. Any other items from the committee?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. At the November second meeting, our friend Vice Chancellor Malave gave a report on the status of the state and city budgets, and the university director of investments Janet Krone reported on the university's investment portfolio. Ms. Krone reported that for the calendar year to date September 30th, 2009, the university's investment pool earned a solid 19.4 percent return, with virtually all of the pool's existing managers beating their benchmarks. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
All right, thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research. I'll call on Trustee Wellington Chan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this November meeting, the committee approved six policy matters. Calendar number four A, Human Research Protection Program Policies and Procedures. This policy is an update on the existing CUNY policy concerning protection of human subjects in research, bringing the policy into conformance with the current federal regulations. The proposed policies and procedures apply to all research involving living human subjects conducted under the auspices of CUNY, at CUNY facilities conducted by any faculty, student, or staff, or involving the use of CUNY non-public information. There was an error in the wording of the resolution that was presented to the committee, which does not affect the substance of this policy. The error has been corrected in the version of the resolution in the revised agenda. Calendar number four B, Kingsborough Community College, AAS in Culinary Arts. This program prepares graduates for entry-level employment in the food service industry, the component of New York's tourism and hospitality industry thus growing most quickly. Calendar number four C, Kingsborough Community College, AS in Chemical Dependency Consulting. This program responds to the growing need of qualified substance abuse counselors in New York State. Graduates will be able to obtain entry-level employment in New York State System of Services and Centers as addiction counselors assistance. Calendar number four D, Lehman College, BS in Environmental Science. This interdisciplinary program integrates courses from biological, chemical, geographical, geological, and physical sciences. The program prepares graduates for careers in environmental protection and planning work in government agencies and private firms. The program also prepares graduates for pursuing an advanced degree in the sciences. Calendar number four E, Lehman College, MS in Family Nurse Practitioner and post-master certificate in Family Nurse Practitioner. This advanced nursing practice program prepares graduates for careers as family nurse practitioners who work in primary care with all members of a family unit across the lifespan. This is the first such program in CUNY and the first program that will be offered by a public institution in the greater New York area. Calendar number four E, Bylaw Amendment to Article 11 of the bylaws. This amendment simplifies the procedure of the colleges' need to follow in order to appoint a faculty member with a degree equivalent to the PhD. Currently, the bylaws contain an outdated list of terminal degrees and other credentials that are considered to be equivalent to a PhD for the purpose of a professional appointment. Because the present list omits a number of what are now common fields, many appointments today involve a waiver of bylaws which consume time and labor. In order to avoid having to amend the bylaws on an ongoing basis so as to reflect the latest developments in professional fields, the bylaws will no longer contain a specific credential list. Instead, the executive vice chancellor and university provost will prepare and circulate to the colleges a list of credentials that the university finds are equivalent to the PhD degree. When the campus has identified a candidate whose credentials correspond to this list, it will no longer be necessary for the campus to go through central office approval. The equivalency will be established on the campus level, the number of bylaw waivers needed will thus be reduced, and the administrative burden on the campuses will be diminished significantly. In the past, amendments to the Article 11 of the bylaws have generally been reviewed by the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration. However, because of this amendment involves equivalencies to a PhD relating to the credential of faculty, it was reviewed by the Committee on Academic Policy Program and Research. This amendment is being brought now because of the importance of its being in place for the spring semester. Given that this notice of bylaw amendment was not given a prior meeting, it will require unanimous vote. Item number four A through all four F were approved by the committee, and I recommend the approval by the board.
Thank you. May I have a second for the committee's motion? Any questions for the committee on any of these items, four A through F? Yes?
Just a comment. I'd like to thank CUNY IRB Director Patty McCubbin and Vice Chancellor Schaefer for the extensive interactions we had on the IRB policy changes. I think those were, we got some very productive changes in the document. This is a document that we can support. Also, Vice Chancellor Logue, I'd like to thank her for the extensive conversations we've had on the last item on the agenda, the degree equivalence. We have a document that is really good for this university. And I'd also like to thank my colleagues in the UFS who worked on these issues.
Thank you. Any other comments on these items? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Items four A through F carry. Anything further from the committee?
No, that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. I'd like to call on Trustee Mark Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board of Trustees Committee on Facilities Planning and Management considered four items at its meeting of November second, 2009. These action items are listed in the board meeting as calendar items, five A through five D. I'd like to present these four items and then seek the board's approval. Five A, CUNY School of Law Agreements, a resolution to authorize those instruments and agreements necessary to proceed with the development of a property at Two Court Square, Long Island City, Queens, for the CUNY Law School project. These agreements are with Citibank and include a development agreement, a purchase agreement, and condominium documents, which will formalize the respective roles of Citibank and CUNY in this project to acquire and develop the Long Island City property that has been selected as the new site for the CUNY Law School, beginning in fall 2011, I believe. Calendar five B, the CUNY five-year capital budget request, a resolution to approve the five-year capital budget request for fiscal years 2010, 2011 through fiscal years 2014, 2015, on behalf of the City University of New York. This is the university's annual five-year capital budget request to support the five-year capital program, which addresses the major new construction, rehabilitation, and capital equipment needs of the university. These are major bonded projects authorized by the City University Construction Fund and funded through the Dormitory Authority of the State of New York, as well as minor rehabilitation projects funded through city and state capital appropriations. Item five C, CUNY lease at 875 Sixth Avenue, New York. This is a resolution to authorize the replacement of an existing lease at this space with a new 15-year lease that includes conversion of existing leased space from office to classroom use in order to house the CUNY School of Professional Studies. Item five D, the CUNY lease at 162-10 Jamaica Avenue, also known as Gertz Plaza, a resolution to authorize the execution of a new twelve-and-a-quarter-year lease at Gertz Plaza, Jamaica, to accommodate the CUNY Public Safety Academy. The CUNY Public Safety Academy, which provides training for new and existing public safety officers at CUNY, has been operating out of space at York College, but with the college in need of space to accommodate its own increased enrollment and its new nursing program. A site selection process was initiated to find a new location for the academy. Gertz Plaza is convenient to York College and to public transit, and has been identified as the most suitable location for the academy. Mr. Chairman, I hereby request your approval of these calendar items.
Thank you. May I have a second to the committee's motion?
Second.
Are there questions for the committee on any of these items? Professor Phillips?
These are all good things, but in particular, I'd like to congratulate Vice Chancellor Weinshol for, again, presenting an aggressive and positive capital budget for the university. This is a growing and dynamic university. We need this kind of budget to keep on growing.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? That carries. Anything further from the committee? Thank you very much. Next, we'll hear from the Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs. I'd like to call on Trustee... I'd like to call on trustee Kathleen Pacilli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs has two items for the board's approval. The committee met on November second, two thousand and nine, and approved the following calendar items. Calendar item six A, College of Staten Island, Revision of the Student Government Constitution, Article Four of the Governance Plan. The board generally does not review student government constitutions. In the case of CSI and a few other campuses, the constitution is incorporated within the college's governance plan. Amendments to governance plans requires a vote by the board, and that is why these revisions to the constitution are before the board today. The revised constitution addresses such issues as quorum, filling of vacancies, enhancing representation in the student government, absenteeism policy, and succession. Amendments to the student government constitution require a referendum with a vote of at least ten percent of the student body. Although the required ten percent vote on the referendum to amend the constitution was not achieved, the college president supports moving it forward. The voter turnout was significantly higher than the turnout when the two thousand and two revisions were adopted. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report on calendar item six A.
Thank you. May I have a second to six A?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Six A carries.
Calendar item six B, Queens College, Student Union Fee Increase. Queens College is requesting an increase of fifteen dollars to be paid by all students for the student union portion of the student activity fee. Under a longstanding agreement between Queens College Student Services Corporation, which is the student union board, and the Board of Trustees, the student union fee is not subject to the student referendum procedures. The fee increase received a unanimous vote of the student union board and is strongly supported by the college president and student leadership. The student union fee has not been increased since nineteen eighty-three. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report on calendar item six B.
I'm happy to second that item. Are there questions on the item for the committee? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, abstentions? That carries.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. I'd like to move the award of the honorary degrees listed at page eighteen in your meeting book. May I have a second on the honorary degrees?
Second.
Any questions about them or comments? Not? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Honorary degrees carry. I'm now going to adjourn this segment of the public meeting so we can go into an executive session. We will reconvene in public following the executive session. Do we stand adjourned?